Good evening and welcome to NTD News. I'm Stephanie A. Cox. Here are today's top stories. The crisis at the southern border hasn't let up, and the Biden administration again denies Governor Greg Abbott's request for help. But Texas citizens volunteer to help quell the chaos. We get an exclusive look at how they're handling it. Thousands of people filled the streets of New York City and closed down Brooklyn Bridge to protest the latest vaccine mandate. Florida Governor Ron DeSantis recently offered to help with California shipping logjam. He offered ships the opportunity to come to Florida's ports. How much will this help? We speak with an expert. Production of the movie Rust has been officially halted after actor Alec Baldwin shot a prop gun, killing a cinematographer last week. And Boston and some college towns are challenging the 2020 census. They say the pandemic forced many college students to leave campus, so many of them were omitted from the census data. President Biden in New Jersey today promoting his Build Back Better Agenda and the bipartisan infrastructure deal. The president says he feels positive about getting a bill passed this week.
President Biden delivered remarks at a New Jersey transit maintenance facility Monday afternoon.
These bills are not about left versus right, or moderate versus progressive, or anything that pits one American against another. These bills are about competitiveness versus complacency.
Biden and Democratic lawmakers are trying to push two critical bills this week, including their economic and climate package, the so-called Build Back Better Agenda, and the infrastructure deal. Democrats are driving toward an agreement on a $1.75 trillion economic and climate package that will allow a separate $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill to pass. They hope to get the infrastructure bill signed into law before Thursday, when Biden leaves for Europe to attend two overseas summits. House Speaker Nancy Pelosi told CNN Sunday that Democrats are close to reaching an agreement on the framework of the economic and climate package.
I think we're pretty much there now.
Biden told reporters on Monday morning that with the grace of God and the goodwill of neighbors, a deal will be made before the trip.
It'd be very, very positive to get it done before the trip.
Biden hosted a meeting with Senate Democrat Joe Manchin and Majority Leader Chuck Schumer on Sunday. Manchin has been one of the two key holdouts on the massive package. Biden said the meeting went well.
A few more things worked out, but it went well.
Senator Manchin says Monday that he still has big concerns about expanding benefits and pushes back on a Medicare expansion. Manchin reaffirmed that $1.5 trillion is the upper limit for a package he can accept.
The Biden administration is rejecting the Texas governor's second plea for financial help to secure the southern border. The governor says Texas officers are working to build human barricades to block illegal immigrants from flooding the state. NTD's Melina Weiscup reports.
Texas Governor Greg Abbott has twice called on President Biden to reimburse Texas for the millions spent handling the border crisis, but so far, those pleas have gone unanswered.
In a Sunday letter, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, director denied Abbott's request, saying that his calls for financial support is unwarranted. The governor first called for federal help last month. He says Texas has been experiencing a crisis since May. The governor did not give a specific dollar amount on what they've spent on the border surge, but he says they've sent thousands of National Guard members and state police to help.
We formed a human barricade to prevent those people from coming into the state of Texas.
And Abbott says their officers are preparing now to do this again, in preparation for a large caravan that is potentially making its way to the state. This footage from the weekend shows thousands of migrants trekking from the city of Topachula, near the Guatemala border, toward Mexico's capital. Mexico lets visa and asylum applicants stay in Chiapas while their cases are being processed. But they can't leave beyond this area without documentation. Some are now demanding help from the Mexican government.
The Mexican authorities should be made aware, because everything here is very expensive, and we cannot be held here. It is as though we have been imprisoned.
An organizer for this group says not everyone wants to go to America, but would like to have the documentation to have a choice.
And U.S. authorities have already arrested nearly 2 million migrants so far this year, the most ever recorded. And with the Biden administration's latest move, rejecting Texas's call for emergency assistance, well, it looks like the Lone Star State will have to handle this on their own for now. Reporting in Washington, D.C., Melina Weiscup, NTD News.
Commissioners in a Texas county near the Mexican border authorized their sheriff to deputize 10 citizens, making them reserve deputies. That authority is meant to better equip them to safeguard locals from the illegal immigrants crossing the border. NTD's Jason Perry is at that border community to see what they're doing to help amid the crisis.
We are here in Kenny County, Texas, on a ranch right near the Mexican border. The rancher here says he's seen plenty of illegal immigrants cutting through this property. We spoke with Samuel Hall. He's the founder of Patriots for America militia. He volunteered to come here to help secure this community.
The county is at its wits' end. They don't have help from the federal government at all. They barely have any help, if any, from the state government. And the neighbors are scared. The residents are scared. And they've been abandoned by the state, and they've been abandoned by our federal government. So it's time to do what Texans do, and that's Texans taking care of Texas. And that's what we're here to do.
He's here with several others who have volunteered to provide security for this border community, which has a population of less than 4,000 people. He said some of the ranches in Kenny County have been in the same families for over 100 years. Samuel said at one point, they did not shower for four days, and a lady opened her home to the volunteers to take showers in. But once they left, she left, because she was too scared to stay home alone.
Two guys crossed the river two months ago, right on the border. They broke into a 73-year-old woman's house, and they beat and sexually assaulted her, so terribly that she almost died. She was in the hospital for a month and a half. That's the fear. That's the fear that these citizens live in every day. There's dead bodies that they leave in the streets. Thank God they're not residents, but it's an intimidation factor. And then what they're doing to children that are crossing this border, filling them with drugs. And I won't go into all the specifics of that, but it's the most horrific evil that you can possibly imagine. And it's happening right here.
Texas state troopers have been arresting illegal immigrants for trespassing in Kenny County.
We're dealing with elected officials. Most of them are on our side. Some of them may not be. We're dealing with the residents. We're dealing with ranchers. And we're dealing with cartel. And so we have to kind of juggle all these multi-folds of this operation, Operation Arrow. But in doing so, we're putting together processes to make sure that when we rotate out, because this is going to be a three-year mission, according to the sheriff, that we have the right men here with the right mission, the right mindset, to make sure this county is protected, both physically from cartel, from people that are coming onto their properties, damaging, breaking into their homes, and the county from illegal liability, and the ranchers.
Samuel explained they're working closely with the sheriff's department to better protect Kenny County, but he says they need monetary support to help do the job better. We reached out to the office of Governor Greg Abbott for comment, but did not hear back before airtime. One of Samuel's concerns is the large caravan of Haitians coming to the southern border. They're expected to arrive in early November. Jason Perry, NTD News, Texas.
And the U.S. State Department announces the details of travel restrictions for foreign visitors. All travelers must provide a negative virus test before boarding a plane to the U.S., even if they're vaccinated.
Those who are eligible to travel but not yet vaccinated will need to provide proof of a negative COVID-19 test within one day before their flight's departure. For those who are vaccinated, the testing requirement remains three days before their flight. And that testing requirement applies to everyone, not just foreign nationals, but also U.S. citizens and lawful permanent residents.
Beginning November 8th, foreign nationals must be fully vaccinated and provide proof of vaccination before they can board a flight to the U.S. There are limited exceptions for children under 18 and certain individuals from countries where vaccines are not yet readily accessible. But they still have to show a negative virus test. There will also be new federal contract tracing requirements. CDC officers will spot-check passengers after they arrive in the U.S. to see if they are complying. Airlines that don't enforce the requirements could be fined up to nearly $35,000 per violation. And Moderna is testing its COVID-19 vaccine on kids 6 to 11. And the drug maker announced today that the shots appear to be working. Moderna says it plans to share the interim results with the FDA soon. Moderna is testing the vaccine on over 4,700 children aged 6 to 11. They gave two shots to the children a month apart, and preliminary results show vaccinated children developed antibodies levels similar to those in vaccinated young adults. The drug maker says vaccinated children had temporary side effects, including fatigue, headache, fever, and injection site pain. The study is still ongoing, and the company cannot yet calculate the vaccine's effectiveness in actually preventing infections in children. Moderna didn't release any further details and hasn't yet submitted its data to a scientific journal. The FDA hasn't approved the Moderna vaccine for teenagers aged 12 to 17, though it is approved for that use in some other countries. And all New York City government employees now have to be vaccinated. That includes police officers and firefighters. But many of them oppose the mandate, so today, thousands took to the streets of New York. NTD's Ariane Pazdar was on the scene.
Today, the workers of the city of New York will march together, casting aside whatever differences we may have.
Thousands of people gathered in Brooklyn on Monday. Most of them were firefighters and police officers. From there, they took off to march to the City Hall in Manhattan. All city employees have until Friday to get the vaccine, or they will be put on unpaid leave. This latest mandate applies to 160,000 city employees, but almost 30% of city workers, close to 50,000 employees, have not yet gotten the shot. It's the newest vaccine mandate in the Big Apple. Some healthcare workers, teachers, and more have already lost their jobs for not taking the vaccine.
I used to work for the Department of Education. I lost my job October 1st. Firefighters, NYPD, and other public workers are the last line of defense. They have already destroyed small businesses. They have already destroyed healthcare workers and the Department of Education employees.
Some attendees were not affiliated with the first responders.
USA! USA!
So why did they show up?
FDNY, NYPD, and healthcare workers, they spent their entire lives protecting us, so I think it's about time that the people actually protect them now.
New York City offers $100 to anyone who gets the shot. The mayor announced that city employees will get $500 if they get the shot before Friday.
If you have to get bribed to take a vaccine, that's kind of messed up, no? That doesn't make sense, right?
Once in Manhattan, demonstrators gathered in front of City Hall, which was the last step of the march.
Attendees here say they will hold the line and not get the vaccine, not even with the $500 incentive, which the city is now offering. Ariane Pazdar, NTD News, New York.
And also today, New York City's largest police union sued the city over the mandate. They say the city is violating the privacy of NYPD officers. They added that the weekly testing policy has worked well so far, and no outbreaks among officers have taken place. And New Yorkers are already casting their early ballots, but the mayoral candidates still have another round of debate to go. Despite the wide ground covered in the first match, New Yorkers still have questions for the candidates, even the ones who've already voted. NTD's Miguel Moreno has that story.
Republican Curtis Lewa and Democrat Eric Adams will debate for the last time in this election on Tuesday. Now, the moderator or moderators will have their questions, but what questions do everyday New Yorkers have for the candidates?
I ask them about what are they going to do about these places that are empty because their landlords are charging way too much money to let people move in there. You know, it's like, you can't enforce cutting rents, but these people are asking way too much money for rents that it's not worth it, and they're making so much money. And look, I'm a capitalist, but some of these people are out of control.
There's a lot of empty storefronts that are not being used, and the reason probably being that the landlords can't get the rent that they need. So what is the mayor going to do about all those open storefronts?
I think just asking the candidates a basic question about where the tax money is going and why that's the best allocation of everybody's money.
Others raised questions about homelessness, public safety, and jobs, to name a few. During last week's debate, the candidates were asked about contentious issues like the COVID-19 vaccine mandate for government workers. Adams said he supports it, and if elected mayor would uphold it. Lewa called the policy "a horror." But they weren't asked if they support the mayor's key to NYC. This order requires you to show ID and proof of vaccination to dine indoors, among other things. We bumped into Lewa at Monday's anti-mandate rally, and we got an answer fit for the occasion.
Oh, that's the most ridiculous of all. Come on. You could go to Jersey, Westchester, Connecticut, you don't have to show any kind of ID. I voted the other day Saturday. I didn't have to show ID. I didn't have to show a vaccine passport. This is ridiculous. Stop this nonsense. Stop it.
Candidate Eric Adams hasn't gotten back to us. Overall, however, the people we interviewed oppose the Republicans' stance. Are you in support of that policy?
Yes.
Okay. So you'd like the next mayor to uphold the policy?
I would.
Because we saw that without the vaccine, a variant was able to spread, and prior to the Delta variant, we almost had it under control. So I'm fully in favor of enforcing whatever we can.
Early voting started on Saturday and ends on Halloween. You can watch the candidates' debate from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on ABC 7 this Tuesday. Miguel Moreno, NTD News, New York.
Airlines staff protested for medical freedom over the weekend. On Friday afternoon, they gathered outside American Airlines headquarters in Dallas, Texas, just the latest of several protests from within the airline industry. Here are the details.
Current and former airline staff, their families, and supporters rallied outside American Airlines headquarters in Dallas Friday. They're calling for medical freedom and for their employers to not enforce the federal vaccine mandate.
The idea that one human being would have domain over another human being is just fundamentally un-American.
They also raised concerns and questions they say have gone unanswered.
There's concerns about the vaccinated pilots and having blood clots or having heart issues up at altitude in flight. If we fly with two vaccinated pilots, is that going to be a problem? Should we have one vaccinated and one unvaccinated pilot up on the flight deck? These are all concerns of all of us that have not been addressed by the FAA, and they need to be.
This American Airlines pilot says he served in the Marine Corps for 24 years, fighting for people's rights at home and abroad. Now he says he's continuing that fight.
I love America, but I love my God and my freedoms more.
He says he wants an explanation as to why airline staff were deemed essential and worked throughout the pandemic, yet now are being threatened with their job if they don't get vaccinated. President Joe Biden ordered a vaccine mandate for all federal contractors last month. That encompasses most airlines. Protesters are now calling on airline CEOs to unite against the mandate.
Just stop carrying mail and stop volunteering for the craft mission. If all the airlines came together and said, fine, we're not going to carry mail anymore, you think that wouldn't have an effect? You think if they did that, they'd stand up to the government and get a change, just like we're standing up here and asking for change?
Many of the protesters NTD spoke to said there's alternatives to the vaccine to prevent or cure a COVID infection. Some also gave anecdotes of successful treatments.
There's tons of things we can do, but that's all hidden, because there's no money in taking vitamin D, vitamin C, zinc, quercetin, and other things that work. And ivermectin works. I had a friend of mine, I had to get her ivermectin to get it to her, because she had gone like 10 days. And you know what? A day later, after taking ivermectin, she was better immediately. So this stuff works, but there's no money in ivermectin. That's like 12 cents a pill.
These women are married to pilots and were wearing their husbands' uniforms. They called the mandate divisive and said it puts unnecessary stress on workers.
We are all equal. We are all God's children. And this is another way for the government, for American Airlines, any other big company that's enforcing these tyrannical mandates, to divide people. And with pilots, our husbands have enough stress being in the cockpit. Management, shame on you for adding to the stress they have. You are supposed to shield them from stress, not be the cause of it.
U.S. Freedom Flyers helped organize the protest. The group is a grassroots coalition of transportation industry employees fighting against the federal vaccine mandate. Southwest Airlines said on Friday that the company will not fire employees who remain unvaccinated after the federal deadline. Protesters are hoping other airlines will follow suit.
Production of Alec Baldwin's movie Rust has been officially halted following the fatal shooting of the film's cinematographer. Baldwin shot and killed the cinematographer on set last week. An investigation is now underway. We have new information from affidavits released Sunday. Here's the latest.
Alec Baldwin's movie in the making, Rust, has come to an official standstill. Production is halted while an investigation into the fatal shooting of cinematographer Helena Hutchins is conducted. In an email to crew members, Rust's production team confirmed the suspension. They said they're working with law enforcement and conducting an internal safety review. The email reads, "Although our hearts are broken and it is hard to see beyond the horizon, this is, at the moment, a pause rather than an end." Baldwin, both producing and acting in the film, accidentally shot Hutchins on set. According to court records, Baldwin had been told the gun was safe to use for rehearsal of a scene. In the scene, he was supposed to pull out the weapon and point it at the camera. Cameraman Reed Russell told a detective he was unsure whether the weapon was checked before it was handed to the actor, adding that he did not know why the gun was fired. According to an affidavit released Sunday, Russell told authorities the camera was not rolling when Baldwin shot the gun, killing Hutchins. Russell said that on the day of the shooting, several members of the camera crew walked off the production in a dispute over payment and lodging, leaving him to do the work. The affidavit further stated Director Joel Souza said he recalled hearing the phrase "cold gun" before the shooting, meaning it was safe to use. He said the scene didn't call for the use of live rounds. We'll keep you updated with the latest developments as the investigation continues.
The National School Board Association is apologizing for its contentious letter to the Biden administration. In the letter, the school board group compared alleged parent threats to domestic terrorism. Here are the details.
After a wave of outcry from parents, local school boards, and politicians, the National School Boards Association has apologized for its letter to President Joe Biden. In a memo issued to its members, the board said, "On behalf of NSBA, we regret and apologize for the letter." The board went on to say, "There was no justification for some of the language included in the letter." Here's what they're referring to. In the original letter, the NSBA commented on alleged threats and acts of violence from parents toward public school officials, saying, "These heinous actions could be the equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism." It's this comparison to domestic terrorism that got the most backlash. Numerous parents saw the letter as an intimidation tactic to stop them from speaking up at school board meetings. School board organizations in at least 20 states distanced themselves from the NSBA, citing disagreement over the way it has characterized parents. Some school boards plan to leave the National Association. In its apology letter, the NSBA said it was sorry for the strain and stress it caused the organizations, and added that it deeply values the voices of parents. Over the last several months, parents have gotten increasingly involved in their local school districts. They're focusing on issues like mask policies, quasi-Marxist critical race theory curriculum, and sex ed.
Boston and some college towns across the nation are challenging the results of the 2020 census. Boston argues that the census undercounted the city's college students, jail inmates, and foreign-born residents. NTD's Allison Lee has the details.
Boston Mayor Kim Janey said in a letter to the Census Bureau that her city will challenge the 2020 census results as soon as formal guidelines are out. The census shows that Boston had a population of just under 676,000 on April 1st of 2020, but the mayor says that figure emits around 5,000 college students, 500 prison inmates, and some foreign-born residents. The census began when the pandemic first hit in March of last year. Many college students had to leave campus when schools switched to remote learning. According to Census Bureau guidelines, students should have been counted at their college addresses, even if they were temporarily away on April 1st. But the mayor says data collected by the city shows that 5,000 students were not counted. They are likely students living off-campus who left the city temporarily. College towns including Bloomington, Indiana, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, and State College, Pennsylvania are challenging the census for similar reasons. The Boston mayor says around 500 inmates at two correctional facilities were also omitted. That's based on records from the Suffolk County Department of Corrections. And the mayor says some areas with lower response rates had larger shares of foreign-born residents. She suggests that issues such as language barriers and government mistrust, particularly with the possibility of a citizenship question, may have resulted in an undercount of these traditionally difficult populations to count. Even if the challenges succeed, the Census Bureau won't change the figures that determine the number of congressional seats. The challenges will impact only the figures that determine federal funding. Allison Lee, NTD News.
Governor Ron DeSantis is offering to help California with its congested ports by letting stuck container ships use Florida's ports instead. But how much would this actually help? NTD's Fay Quarter asks an expert.
Florida Governor Ron DeSantis recently offered to help alleviate the log jams at California ports by offering Florida's ports as an alternative. NTD spoke with an expert to see how much help this would be.
Florida ports are not as robust as L.A. and Long Beach. Giving an idea, the Port of Miami, which is the largest port in Florida, handles less than a million containers a year in 2020. That is the same amount of containers that the Port of L.A. handled last month.
Sal Mercogliano is a professor at Campbell University. He says Florida's ports are far smaller and are less capable compared to California's ports. Not just that, Florida's ports are also in danger of losing trade.
The ocean carriers, those big nine shipping companies that control 85% of the world's container trade, they'd much rather go into one single port than go into multiple ports. That saves them money in port fees and fuel and docking. They'd much rather go in there. And so one of the things that we're starting to see on the East Coast is, very much like the West Coast, this consolidation into regional ports.
The smaller ports in Florida could lose business to these bigger consolidated ports. Though Florida could help with port delays a bit, diverting a few ships isn't going to solve the supply problem.
There is not the, you know, pull the sword from the stone answer that fixes all this in one problem. We have to look at everything holistically. We've got to look at issues in the port. We've got to look at the roads. We've got to look at truck drivers. We've got to look at rail. We've got to look at warehouses. And we've got to look, too, that, you know, we're consuming more.
Some Florida ports are offering incentive packages. DeSantis says he's invested nearly $1 billion into his state's ports, which operate 24/7. Fay Quarter, NTD News.
Coming up, flooded streets and overturned trucks. Record rainfall in California's Bay Area caused widespread damages over the weekend. And two assistant district attorneys in San Francisco have resigned and are joining the effort to recall the current DA. Find out more in just a moment here on NTD News.
Hello, I'm Mike Lindell, inventor of MyPillow. Thanks to your support, you've helped make MyPillow become one of the fastest-growing companies in America. Over the last 12 years, you've helped MyPillow create thousands of jobs right here in the U.S.A.
When I got MyPillow, I'm asleep almost immediately. I stay asleep at night, and I wake up more well-rested in the morning.
That's why I invented MyPillow. My patented fill adjusts to your exact individual needs and helps keep your neck supported and aligned. I'm interrupting this commercial right now. Retailers have canceled MyPillow, and to thank you for your support, I'm going to pass the savings directly on to you. For example, you get my six-piece towel sets, regular $109.99, now only $44.98. Or MyPillow dog beds for as low as $19.99 with your promo code.
For the best night's sleep in the whole wide world, visit MyPillow.com.
In every country communism gains power, authoritarianism and death followed in its wake. Communism promises a world without suffering, and yet, in its execution, does the exact opposite. Following Lenin's death, Stalin's 29-year reign killed an estimated 60 to 66 million people. More famines and purges would occur. The very peasants that communism was supposed to benefit instead starved to death under its rule. The party dictates what is right and wrong. Mao ended up killing between 50 million and 70 million people. As an investigative journalist, I want to understand why.
An atmospheric river hit California this weekend, drenching the northern part of the state. The Bay Area saw flooding, trees toppling over, power outages, and more. Here's more from our reporters in California.
It's sunny now, but over the weekend, wind and rain stormed across California's Bay Area nonstop on Sunday. The Bay Area National Weather Service reported rainfall as high as 16 inches. The storm flooded streets, toppled trees, and caused power outages. Events were also canceled. Winds reached as high as 50 miles per hour in some areas. Trucks were seen tipping over on the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge. Early on Monday morning, a section of the 880 freeway was closed due to flooding. People abandoned their cars that were trapped in the water. All lanes were reopened by 9:00 AM. Downtown Sacramento set a new record for the amount of rainfall in one day, 5.44 inches. Its previous record was 5.28 inches, recorded in 1880. Further north in Eldorado County, where the Kaldor Fire was contained as of October 21st, flooding now ensues.
There were so many trees burned and so many areas that were now exposed to the rainfall, it created a lot of downpour and mud that slid off. And it's now filled all of the creeks and streams in the area. And I mean, this used to be a small creek, and now it's a giant creek.
No storms are forecasted for the rest of this week. Eileen Eng, NTD News, California.
California's damage came after the atmospheric river caused a storm to hit the drought-stricken state. A meteorologist tells us we can expect conditions to normalize this week. NTD's David Lamb reports.
On Sunday, California and the Pacific Northwest was hit by what meteorologists call a bomb cyclone.
When you hear the term bomb cyclone or bombogenesis, that means it's a low pressure over, in this case, it was over the Pacific, that just deepened very quickly.
Murdoch told NTD that the bomb cyclone is moving towards southern California and the Central Valley. Over the weekend, an atmospheric river, or a river in the sky, also hit the state.
And when it got into the subtropics, it started bringing up that moisture from the area near Hawaii. Not exactly Hawaii itself, but that started trailing that into our area.
The weather service issued a high surf warning on Friday, citing potential waves that can be 30 feet high. There was a previous atmospheric river in January, but it was fast-moving, as opposed to this recent one, Murdoch says.
Also, like I said, it moved very slow. It wasn't just a few hours of rain, it was half a day of rain for certain areas. And for some of those records, like San Francisco, this was the wettest day in October they've ever had at our climate site that goes back to the 1800s.
The rain eases concerns for wildfire conditions, but he says we need more rain to overturn the drought.
We've been in quite a deficit for the last few years, so this is a nice step forward, but compared to the last few years' worth of rain, it's one step forward after about three steps back.
The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration reports that flash flooding remains a concern for areas with burn scars, but things should normalize by midweek. David Lamb, NTD News, California.
And two San Francisco prosecutors resigned and have joined a campaign to recall their former boss, San Francisco District Attorney Chesa Boudin. They cited disagreeing with his policies. NTD's Jason Blair has more.
Two prosecutors who served under San Francisco District Attorney Chesa Boudin have resigned and joined a recall effort to get Boudin replaced.
My decision to resign was the result of a growing belief that Chesa Boudin lacks the desire and willingness to prosecute crime effectively in San Francisco.
Brooke Jenkins and Don Dubain are now assisting recall campaign Safer SF Without Boudin.
We are a Democratic-led campaign composed of a diverse coalition of community leaders, small business owners, and families.
Over 83,000 signatures were submitted on Friday and now have 30 days to be verified. This is about 32,000 more than needed to get the recall vote on the ballot next year.
I must say, I have lost my confidence in Chesa Boudin to serve as our elected district attorney.
Dubain says that Boudin selectively enforces laws according to both his own political priorities and his concern about public perception.
Simply releasing someone without any consequence is not reform, and it is not progressive. San Francisco deserves a district attorney that will use a balanced approach to criminal justice.
Both former prosecutors gave examples of cases they worked on where Boudin's involvement and actions eventually led to their decisions to resign. Dubain described one case he was prosecuting where Boudin directed him to recommend a more lenient sentence to the judge. Dubain felt this reduced sentence was not justified and even in violation of state laws.
What's so progressive or reform-minded about recommending a sentence that is more lenient than the law provides and authorizes for a four-time convicted domestic batterer who's now been convicted of shooting his girlfriend with a firearm?
Boudin says that the recall campaign against him is funded by dark money.
We are seeing more money spent by these dark money groups to oust a sitting district attorney that has never been seen anywhere in this country.
The San Francisco Department of Elections has one month to verify the recall signatures. If at least 51,325 are verified, a vote to recall Boudin will be held in June of 2022. Jason Blair, NTD News, San Francisco.
Denver International Airport is desperately looking for staff now that it's returning to normal opening hours. It needs around 1,000 people, and organized a job fair expecting thousands to show up. But the actual turnout wasn't even close. NTD's Evelyn Lee reports.
A job fair was held over the weekend at Denver International Airport. It hoped to attract 5,000 people, but instead, 100 showed up. Ira Wolf, president of Success Performance Solutions, says those expectations were unrealistic to begin with.
The businesses, the communities that are close to the airport are higher, are basically higher-income areas. The positions that they were hiring for, mostly in the food service and the concessions and janitorial and maintenance, are lower skilled, lower wages.
And on top of that, the number of people who are willing or qualified to work is low. The job fair intended to fill about 1,000 job openings at stores, restaurants, and other businesses at the airport, because starting November, normal operating hours will return. Wolf says the pandemic exposed all the vulnerabilities in the labor economy. According to him, many women had to withdraw from the workplace, but they make up an increasing chunk of the workforce.
And now women, because of childcare and parenting and other issues, have withdrawn from the workplace, and their participation rate's down to 52%.
The labor shortage could lead to huge security lines at the airport with more travelers coming back. A lack of shuttle bus drivers is also making it difficult for the shuttle to fully reopen. And last month, about 350 janitors voted to authorize a strike for better working conditions and better pay. Evelyn Lee, NTD News.
Getting paid time off after having a child has been a hot topic lately. But what about getting a new pet? Should workers still get paid time off? NTD's Phil Zo has the story.
Sorry, no Abby.
A worker in London asked for paid time off because he just got a new puppy.
That's a lot.
His boss took to the internet with a survey, getting over 30,000 responses.
So we all know about paternity leave, what about palternity leave?
Palternity is a new term that's been flying around the pet world. Workers wondering if they can get paid time off after getting a pet.
For pet parents to bond with their animals. I've just never heard of time, you know, paid leave for it.
Rob has been a dog owner for six years.
I mean, as an employer, you know, giving paid vacation or paid leave for a new pet, that's a big perk, an expensive perk.
He says a good alternative is to work from home while taking care of the new dog.
Otto just got a dog from a shelter this weekend, so she is actually able to work from home for three days.
In the U.S., only one in five workers currently get paid family leave.
And everybody should be able to get paternity leave, and then we can probably talk about palternity leave, I guess, yeah.
Jenny has been a dog owner for over 20 years. She says palternity is worth considering.
I mean, some people can't have children, and they treat their dogs as if they are family, so, I mean, I don't know that they need three months off like most maternity and paternity leaves are, but yeah, I mean, maybe a couple weeks.
Another solution is doggy daycare.
The dogs are here to meet their BFFF, Best Very Friend Forever, while the pet parents are off at work, and then it's better quality time when they get home.
The survey in London ended with 60% voting against puppy paternity leave, and the rest for it. Phil Zo, NTD News, New York.
Coming up, blasts and fires in China over the weekend. The country saw accidental explosions in three cities. A human rights group Amnesty International is leaving Hong Kong by the end of the year. They say the city's national security law has made it impossible to operate. Stay tuned for more here on NTD News. From the north to the east, several accidental explosions and fires were reported in China over the weekend. Many were killed and wounded. NTD's Tiffany Meyer has more.
A number of accidental explosions and fires detonated in China over the weekend. The first, a tragedy at China's top aerospace university on Sunday. A laboratory blast there killed two and injured at least nine more. The university later confirmed the explosion struck at one of its college campuses, the College of Material Science and Technology, and said it had caused a fire too. The college operates five separate labs, but it is unclear which one was involved. And no further victim information has been released. Chinese media reported the incident might have been an experiment gone wrong. Fire officials say the cause of the explosion is still under investigation. The news is triggering concerns over lab safety in China. That's after another accident earlier this year, when a graduate student was killed in a chemistry lab blast in Beijing. Elsewhere in the country, another explosion struck China the same day. Two people were killed and seven others injured in the northeastern city of Dalian on Sunday. The blast reportedly caused by a gas leak started a fire in a residential building in the city. The fire was extinguished, and residents were evacuated. The incident came soon after a separate explosion within the week. Less than 300 miles away, the neighboring city of Shenyang saw nearly 50 people injured and five killed in a gas explosion at a restaurant. Video footage shared online shows the massive destruction of a three-story building, with debris littered across the area. Nearby buildings and cars were also damaged. And last month, a gas explosion killed eight people in Dalian. And in East China, a 2:00 AM fire broke out in Qingdao City over the weekend. The blaze destroyed a number of shops near a local college, all in the middle of the night. The storefronts had been built shoulder to shoulder, allowing the fire to spread easily. One witness described hearing the explosion. Local authorities said no one was killed or injured, though we cannot verify that report independently. The cause of the fire is still under investigation.
Amnesty International, the international rights group, said today it would close its Hong Kong offices. That's because Beijing imposed security law has made it impossible for rights groups to work there freely.
Rights group Amnesty International will shut its offices in Hong Kong by the end of this year. That decision was driven by Hong Kong's national security law. In a statement on Monday, the group said the China-imposed law has, quote, "made it effectively impossible for human rights organizations in Hong Kong to work freely and without fear of serious reprisals from the government." In the past, Hong Kong had served as one of Asia's leading NGO hubs, with groups drawn to its robust rule of law and autonomy that was promised for Hong Kong after the control of the former British colony was returned to Beijing in 1997. But since the implementation of the security law last year, authorities have crushed a once vibrant civil society and curbed free speech and protests. At least 35 prominent groups have disbanded, including several leading trade unions, NGOs, and professional groups. While some groups have relocated to Taiwan, others are urgently shredding files and deleting photos and online material, fearing even once innocuous details could be used against them under Hong Kong's evolving security regime. Hong Kong and Chinese authorities say the national security law enshrines individual rights, justifying the laws as necessary to restore stability after mass protest in 2019, when millions took to the streets over many months. There is no immediate response from the Hong Kong government to a Reuters request for comment.
Coming up, the U.S. State Department condemns the coup in Sudan. Tens of thousands of protesters are on the streets of Sudan's capital today after the military arrested cabinet members and detained the prime minister. That and more in just a moment here on NTD News. And now to North Africa, where tens of thousands of protesters took to the streets of Sudan's capital today. That's after soldiers arrested most of Sudan's cabinet members and detained the prime minister in an apparent military coup. Injuries and gunfire have been reported.
Footage from local broadcasters shows protesters carrying the national flag near the military headquarters with plumes of black smoke and fire. Abdel Fattah al-Burhan, a general who headed the Sovereign Council, a power-sharing ruling body, announced a state of emergency across the country and dissolved the council and the transitional government. Prime Minister Abdallah Hamdok was detained and moved to an undisclosed location after refusing to issue a statement in support of the coup, according to the Information Ministry, which was still apparently under the control of Hamdok supporters. The ministry called for resistance against the coup. Sudan has been on edge since a failed coup plot just last month. Military and civilian groups have been sharing power, following the toppling of the long-serving leader Omar al-Bashir two years ago. The military was meant to pass leadership of the Joint Sovereign Council to a civilian figure in the coming months, but transitional authorities had struggled to move forward on several issues, including whether to hand over Bashir to the International Criminal Court, where he is wanted on war crimes.
And the U.S. State Department is condemning the coup in Sudan. They say any change to the transitional government by force risks assistance and the relationship between the two countries. In response, the U.S. is pausing assistance from the $700 million of economic support funds for the country. And now to Hungary. Prime Minister Viktor Orban is facing challenges to his power, both in his country and from the EU. He's at odds with Europe over media freedoms and the rule of law, and observers expect a close election race next year. Here's NTD's Earl Rhodes with more.
Thousands of supporters marched in Budapest in a show of unity behind Hungary's Prime Minister Viktor Orban on Saturday. Orban gave a rare public speech.
The whole European Union has attacked us. It also attacked us when we stopped the flow of migrants, when we built the fence and defended our borders. Dozens of prime ministers have attacked Hungary. We are still here, but who can remember even their names?
Orban came to power in 2010, and his fidesz party has dominated Hungary's parliament with a two-thirds majority ever since. One supporter says Orban has a vision for the future.
I think the opposition is not able to govern. They don't have any concepts. They only have one goal, to oust Viktor Orban, who I think is Europe's best politician.
Hungary is expected to face a close parliamentary election next year. For the first time, a united front of opposition parties is challenging Orban. Their candidate for prime minister made his first appearance during a separate rally organized by the opposition on the same day.
Orban has already confronted with almost every single country in Europe. Orban is really stopping the European Union from stepping up in environmental and human rights issues, so I believe that we will be very good friends with Europe, definitely.
Orban's government with its main ally Poland has clashed with Brussels repeatedly. The EU is now considering imposing financial penalties on the country over concerns that Orban has eroded democratic institutions and the rule of law. Earl Rhodes, NTD News.
Coming up, we take a look at a Spanish tradition where shepherds guide their flocks through the capital city of Madrid.
You worked hard for your money. You invest in stability, for your retirement and your family's future, to build and leave them with something greater. The next unprecedented financial crisis, political misstep, or unstable government can depreciate it all away. It was called the gold standard for a reason. It was called the gold standard for a reason, the financial preservation of tomorrow. Diversify your assets against inflation, market volatility and the unknown with real money. Hedge your wealth with the purest form of money, physical gold and silver. Because any currency printed on paper can be manipulated. What's backing up your IRA? Do what you need to do right now to be prepared with the Reagan Gold Group. Visit now, rggusakit.com or call us at 866-912-1384. Receive up to $2,500 in free silver coins and a free safe with your new precious metals IRA. Call now.
In other news, the European cruise industry is bouncing back after the pandemic. And whilst some things are different, particularly the protocols for dealing with COVID outbreaks, the industry hopes to quickly return to 2019 levels. And it is well on the way to doing so. NTD's Joy Dugid brings us the story.
Cruise ships are visiting Spain once again, bringing tourists from the UK, mainland Europe and the U.S. But the pandemic has dramatically changed the industry. These ships are not packed with holidaymakers like they used to be. The capacity for those docking in Spain is limited to 75%. And there are strict protocols in case of a COVID-19 outbreak.
The passengers onboard who have positive antigen tests in the middle of the cruise will be isolated in an individual cabin on a deck alone and exclusively dedicated to passengers who test positive. All passengers onboard wear a bracelet that allows us to geolocate all contacts who have been within two meters of that passenger who has tested positive.
Despite the new restrictions, the industry is well on the way to getting shipshape. MSC already has 19 cruisers running, more than half of its fleet. They have also opened new routes to Brazil and South Africa.
The market has shown us that the pandemic will not end the desire to travel onboard a ship. 2021 turnover has been similar to what we sold in 2019.
The Association of Cruise Companies, CLIA, says Europe led the way in getting back onboard after the pandemic. By June this year, three-quarters of Europe's cruise ships were operating again, and that keeps rising.
This year, almost 80% of the cruise activity will be recovered and we hope that in 2022, we will recover 100%. I think it is a fairly realistic forecast and above all, quite an optimistic future.
CLIA says almost 30 million people took a cruise in 2019, creating a million jobs and an economic impact of £112 billion. The industry hopes to get back to full steam very soon. Joy Dugid, NTD News.
And now to Spain. Madrid rang to the sound of sheep bells yesterday as shepherds guided their flocks through the heart of the capital. Locals lined the route to welcome the traditional spectacle, which allows shepherds to use ancient migration routes from northern Spain to the south for winter grazing.
Out of the paddock and into the city. The streets of Madrid were filled with sheep on Sunday as shepherds guided their flocks through the heart of the Spanish capital following ancient seasonal herding routes.
I didn't realize that we were going to be so close to them. I thought there would be maybe more space where we could. I've seen people touch them. I've seen people pet them. I didn't realize that we were going to be right here.
The annual event, which started in 1994, allows shepherds to exercise their right to use traditional routes to herd their livestock from northern Spain to more southerly pastures for winter grazing. Shepherd Miguel Gonzalez has worked almost his entire life with the animals and said he was proud to support the traditional migration. We are reclaiming the royal cattle routes that are old paths that were used to take cattle across Spain. He said clad in traditional dress. The route would have taken them through the quiet countryside a few centuries ago, but today sees them traverse through the bustling city.
And that's all for today's news. Thanks for tuning in. I'm Stephanie A. Cox.